This is a special City of Wapaka City Council meeting.
Welcome, everybody. This is a special meeting. It's a committee of the whole meeting. Today is Wednesday, August 31st, 2022, and it's six o'clock. I'll call this meeting to order. You have, uh... Ask Mary to put her on mute.
Hey, Mary. If you can hear us, if you can put your mic on mute, that would be awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I call this meeting to order. In attendance are... We have full attendance. Mary Fair is the only one that's not in the, in the building, but she's attending virtually with us tonight. So we have a quorum of attendance.
Mary, did you also call in? I think you have, do you have a phone and a computer going?
I don't. I don't have them going.
All right, let's see if I can... Okay, I think I might have fixed it. I think we're good.
Okay. Are we okay? Do you want me to start over here? All right, let's go ahead and approve the agenda. We'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Chestnut, that we approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Against, say no. Motion carried. Okay, so the, the reason that we're here tonight is to talk about the capital improvement plan, but we're also going to be, well, which is part of the capital improvement plan, but we're also going to be getting an update on the public works facility project, too. We're gonna, we're gonna just change this around a little bit tonight, although it looks like the agenda has it the exact way that we want to do this. Justin Fisher, who's from Baird, Robert W. Baird Company, is going to make a presentation for us tonight on our, on our debt capacity and, and what that looks like in the, for this year, next year, and into the future. So we want to give him the opportunity to talk about that first, and then, and then we'll go into talking about the capital plan and some other things as we go through the night. So, Aaron, I, do you want to set this up here?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. All right, so council members, if you could turn your attention to page two, there's a memo in your packet. It kind of sets up this conversation for tonight. So on that memo, we do have a recap of what our 2022 geo-bond projects were. Again, we're focusing on our geo-bond related projects tonight, throughout the night, as we have some really large items as it relates to the public works facility specifically and how the impacts of that will reverberate into the next several years. And you can see that if we take that public works facility out, we're doing very, very well, credit to staff, on how we're coming in, in budget for those projects. Right now, we're projected, when they're all completed, you'll see the list of them there, to have about $59,000 remaining from that, those borrowed funds. And then, of course, we have our public works facility where, as you heard more than a month ago, that those project costs are coming in, expected to be approximately $3 million over what we had budgeted and borrowed for in 2022, which that borrowed number was $7 million. Right now, we're looking at total projected expenses at a little over $10 million, and we'll get into that. Justin will talk a bunch about that. So Justin is going to talk about a number of things tonight. It's going to get kicked over to me when we're talking tax rate impacts into the future. The mayor has been very involved. Kathy's been doing work in the background. Stephanie's been involved. Justin's been involved. It's been a, really a team effort over more than a month. So we look forward to going through all that with you. But to sum up what we're bringing to you tonight, what it looks to accomplish, show a reduction in eventual stability in the city's mill rate, remain within state and city borrowing policies, continue to fund $1.5 million annual borrows for future, future capital needs, show an ability to fund future infrastructure investments into the River North development. That would be above and beyond the $1.5 million borrow, and we'll get into the mechanics of that. Want to have a neutral impact on funding for general operations. We'll show you how that works, and then complete full construction of a new public works facility, or at least show you what that would look like to get there in 2023. So with that, we'll get right into Justin's part, which will be looking at our debt capacity against our policies. And Justin, I'll kick it over to you.
Thanks, Aaron. Thanks for having me here tonight. As Aaron mentioned, a few pieces to the puzzle, right? So what we've been doing over the last month is taking all these different pieces and putting together an overall longer-term plan for, for the city, taking all these different things into account, and now with the new tax increment district, also factoring that into how that fits into your overall borrowing limits and so forth. So what Aaron has on the screen, I know that may not be the first page in your packet, but what I'm going to go through is this first chart. Well, I guess this is, this is the one with the public works facility project in there. And what this is showing you is, in the black bars, that's your existing general obligation debt, your principal outstanding on an annual basis. And you can see that, that black bar chart goes down on an annual basis because every year you're paying down your existing principal. The green, if you look at that, that takes into account future borrowings of about $1.5 million every year going forward for forever. And what this does is also take a 3% growth factor to, to be conservative for inflation and so forth, because costs, you know, have risen. But the goal is to try to stay around that $1.5 million borrowing measure every year to make sure you're getting the capital improvements and, you know, equipment and so forth. You need to continue to operate. The, the orange bar there, that's the hypothetical future potential borrowings related to tax increment district number 11. You know, we modeled that in here because, one, I think it shows that hopefully this is conservative. We don't know if that's actually going to happen or not. Hopefully, you know, it, it may, may come in less, but what we want to do is factor it into the, the overall capacity limits. So you can see that, yes, we are accounting for everything we know at this particular point that could potentially happen in the future. And then the blue bars there, that's the public works facility. So you can see that, that is stacked on top of everything. You still have at kind of potentially that, that gray bar being the, what's remaining, your capacity, about $3 plus million. Because if you recall, municipalities are allowed to borrow 5% of your equalized valuation. So for instance, the city's valuation is $540 million. So that's pretty big capacity. The city then says, we want to be a little bit more conservative because we don't want to ever get right up to what we're technically allowed to be able to borrow. So we're going to limit ourselves to 3.75% of that 5%, or 75%, not to get above there. So that's what this bar chart is showing you, 75% of what you're allowed to borrow. So even with your policy, you can see that factoring in everything that we can think of at this particular point, you still are going to be within your, your policy, and you still have some good cushion in there. The other thing we want to bring up is, you know, this uses hopefully a pretty conservative growth factor of 1.5% to your valuation growth on an annual basis. This past year, it grew 13%. That changes this graph pretty dramatically. So hopefully, we're being conservative in what it looks like right now and in the future. This looks even much better down the road. So with that being said, I mean, there's, there's a lot of different unknowns as far as what the valuations are going to do, but this lays out the plan to show you visually that you do have the capacity, if you so choose, to move forward with the additional $3 million for the public works facility.
Thanks, Justin. And just as a comment, so the orange, again, is for a possible TID-11 project, and as Justin has explained, it's shown in the geo-debt here, but the full expectation is that there will be revenues to pay that part of the debt, so we will not have to tax for that to pay that orange part of the debt. So we're basically setting up, as it goes along, it's called PEGO. So Aaron and Justin, if, if I said anything wrong there, you know, or...
No, that's, that's right on. We talked about it this afternoon, and when we look at these, the colors, the reality is, is that orange part of the, it's a different type of debt because it will have revenues outside of the debt service fund levy that would come in to pay for that. So it would not be...
Correct.
Coming from that debt service fund levy.
So you know, if a project is built, it increases in tax value. That money gets to come in to the TIF, and then that money is being used to pay that debt off. Okay, and then Kathy, go ahead.
I just want to clarify that that is still going to be general obligation debt, and the only reason we're doing that was, is for a lower rate. In the past, we've used other financing methods for TIF debt that was not attributable to our geo limitations, but because of our good credit rating and, and the capacity that we have, we can get a better rate for that TIF debt, like we've done in the other refinancings that we've done with TIF eight. So I just want to clarify that for you.
Thank you. Yeah, we had that question this afternoon.
Mm-hmm. So I have one thing, too, Mayor, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Justin, can you just go over this? And I think maybe we did it a month and a half ago or so when we brought this up. Can you remind council one more time why that public works building and why that blue right now is slotted for the year it is, and how the note anticipation note works, and why you believe that's the best route?
Before you answer that, let me just make sure that council understands this, that the, the blue, which is the increased amount that we're, that you would have to, to borrow to finish the public works building, you have not approved that additional amount yet. And you will obviously have the opportunity to do that, and we, we expect that that would happen at our October 4th meeting. So you have time to think about it, but it's in here just so that you can see what it looks like. Okay? So...
Yeah. So great question. And so the, the thought is to do a construction note, if you so choose to move forward with the additional $3 million to fund the, the public works project. We would then wait and see, you would, you would build it out and make sure that the project costs were finalized at that $3 million. Hopefully, you know, by all sudden done, it comes in less than $3 million. Will that be the case? Only time will tell. But that would be the intent. And once the project costs are all finalized and the building is in good working order and so forth, at that particular point, we would analyze at what time to take out that construction note into this long-term borrowing. You can do that construction note up to five years. And so that's why we have it in here. In 2027, we anticipated potentially taking it out, but with the recent large valuation increase of 13%, that allowed the city to have much more borrowing capacity and looking at things, you know, yeah, we may be able to take out that construction note a few years earlier if, if the capacity continues to look favorable. But I, I don't want to put you in that position because I don't want to lock in the long-term debt right away until more of the project costs are known on the back end.
Right. Go ahead, Demetrius.
Why did we have that such a large percentage valuation increase?
Yeah, it's, and if someone, if you have a answer to this, I would say on a statewide basis, we've seen large valuation increases all over the state, as you've probably seen housing values increased pretty dramatically and so forth. So I'll let Kathy comment on more, though.
Well, it has a lot to do with the state formula and how they calculate equalized values. What they're trying to do in, in making our value equalized is that our value is the same as the town of Farmingtons, the town of Minashas, that, so that if you did comparisons of anything using your equalized value, you can have an apples-to-apples type of comparison. So it's a, it's a formula that the state goes through with housing sales and, and markets and stuff, and they adjust what our value is, and that's how they come up with the supposedly fair market value of the city's real estate. And that's where they also use for comparing whether or not you're in compliance with your assessed value, which is the value that we use to, to bill on the tax bill. So we have to make sure that we are within 90% of that equalized value, and you have four years to catch up if you don't. Okay?
So, yeah, go ahead, Colin.
To follow up on that question, is part of the jump related to the closing of the TIDS that happened this last year?
No, I don't believe so. That more is going to be, that's always been in the equalized value. What it hasn't been in is what is kind of like taxed. So that's the difference. So the equalized value is, again, going, is the full value of the city.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
And, okay, yeah, no, 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 I don't want to, I don't want to move on until I know the, the, all these answers. So Paul, go ahead.
With, is the note anticipation note, is the interest fixed for as long as we want it, or is it variable?
Fixed.
And then what is, okay, then what is your opinion on the risk assessment of interest rates rising versus doing some sort, doing a note now or rather than five years with a note anticipation note?
Yeah, so the beauty of the, the construction note is it's fixed rate. So you lock it in, and you can have a, a call feature pretty early in the process, giving you maximum flexibility to take it out when you're ready and, and timing is optimal. Reason we took out the, the $7 million earlier than maybe we originally planned is because we saw interest rates rising at a pretty high clip, and the expectation was they were going to continue to rise. We were able to get that 20-year financing for under 3%. You know, today you'd be high 3%. So, you know, on $7 million, that's a significant amount of money. So, yeah, we, but this being kind of the, now that there's a potential additional cost here, we would want to be a little bit more cognizant of making sure we don't take out the long-term borrowing until the, the costs are absolutely known. And then, at that particular time, we look at getting into the market when it's favorable. Yeah, interest rates, you know, could go up more, absolutely, but in a couple of years from now, I, you know, who knows? You know, in two years from now, it could, it could bounce back out. I mean, it, it's been so wild the last even, even couple of months. I mean, the 10-year treasury was at 2, you know, 65, and now it's back up to 3%. So it's jumping around at such a high clip right now, and you've seen in the stock market. When it's going up, then it's back down. So interesting times right now. So it's more about making sure that the project costs before we take on the long-term debt.
You have a second part of that?
No, that was the second.
Okay, okay. Well, he's good at it. Scott, you had a question?
I was going to ask the same question as Paul, so it just got answered. Thanks.
Anybody else? All right, awesome. I just, if you look at that graph, there's a couple of things that, that, you know, we should just talk about because it's in front of you. One is the, the TID-11 project. We are in negotiations to bring forward to council, and we expect to bring to council later in the month of September, a possible project in TID number 11. So we have an idea of what we feel that's going to cost for us to get that project started, and what it's going to cost over the years as far as most, the majority of it is going to be PEGO, of course, is, is so, PEGO meaning you, you're, you're paying each year based on the property taxes for the previous year, kind of, is how that works. So that's why that's in there. Again, you need, you need to weigh in on that, and you need to either decide whether you want to move forward with that project or not. But we do plan on that being another special city council meeting in September. We're not sure when that's going to be, but we think it's important enough that it's, it's, we, that we don't want to hold it on a regular city council meeting night, that it, that it should just stand on its own. So later in the month of September, that'll be happening. And then the, the green part, as Justin Fisher had explained, that's, that's assuming that we borrow $1.5 million each year for our capital improvement, which includes our street programs, police vehicles, and, and any other types of, in, capital-type improvements that we do, trucks, you know, that, that we do within, within the city. Again, that, that's a, that's a number of 1.5. It could vary from that, but Aaron, we, we do want to make sure that council knows that that number cannot be zero, though.
Right. So out of that 1.5 million, it's important to know that between $500 and $750,000 of that 1.5 million should, really needs to go towards transportation aid qualifying expenses. So road projects, equipment that takes care of roads, so on and so forth. So it's important to know that that 1.5 is really maybe $750,000 or $500,000 when you get done with those types of projects. And that's on an average basis. So the last couple of years, we have had projects, road projects that have been over a million, which helps that average. So, but we want to stick in that $500 to $750,000 per year.
Henry, go ahead.
The orange, the TIF, excuse me, the TIF 11 projects, that is, how much is that amount? And then is that tied just to the one project the council will be considering? The second question is, are there other infrastructure costs we will need to undertake in the future in TIF 11?
Yeah, really good question, Henry. So this, so as Mayor Smith said, this accounts for some things that haven't had approval yet, that we haven't talked about details yet. That may not happen, but we did want to make sure that we put everything in here that could have reasonably happened in the next several years. That amount right now, we've talked about as a $3 million infrastructure project, and that's what's reflected in this graph. Could there be additional infrastructure borrows, you know, three years after that, five years after that, that aren't reflected in here? Yes, that's possible. I don't think we, we just didn't want to go 10 years out. And I, and I think it's important to also note that if there are those, we would not suggest entering into those unless it was structured like this, where there was revenues coming in to offset that expense.
Good. Okay. Anybody else have any questions on this graph? Oh, I'm sorry. Colin, go ahead.
That's fine. It looks like the tightest year, I guess, is to say, the most challenging year is 2028 or 2027. And my, I guess I'm, if, if the growth of the equalized value doesn't grow, it seems like that's the point where you have a problem paying for our yearly, your $500,000 minimum that we have to pay. Is that, is that correct to assess it that way?
Yeah, I mean, it's, if, if you don't grow for the next several years, and, you know, through 2027, yeah, this will look tighter. Absolutely look much tighter. You know, is that potentially going to happen? I'd say that's a much slimmer chance, but, you know, there has been years where the city has not grown. So, you know, it has happened, but then, you know, typically you see a kind of a recoup, and it has balanced out on average well beyond 1.5%.
The, the bar graphs that you're showing show approximately 20 million. 5% of 540 is about 27 million. So your bar graph is this 3.75%? So on top of this, to meet legal standards required by the state of Wisconsin, there's still a little bit of room. So...
Yes.
Okay.
It would make, yeah, but it would, obviously, it would, council would have to change their policy to go above that 3.75%.
Okay.
And that would take a super majority of council to go above that.
All right. Thank you.
I don't think anything. Justin, do you want to stick around just for this as we go through this next one?
Absolutely.
And then I think after this, we can, we'll get into our specific projects, and you can get the heck out of here, if you want.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Justin. All right, so this next page is another, so now we just talked about how this matches up with our capacity, but it doesn't speak to necessarily how much it costs the taxpayer. So this next page looks at projected mill rates and projected levy amounts, and we'll work through this forecasting model that Baird put together. And again, that was a team effort in getting these numbers as accurate as they possibly can be at this time, to give you an idea of the trends we expect to see with this type of a, a plan. So to look at the, the first line, the general fund levy, if we go from left to right, this is really what we use for operations, and that's what we're limited to for our operating budget year in and year out. You can see in 2022 to 2023, we have already accounted for that net new construction increase, the preliminary numbers of 3%. I can tell you, that's the only number that we know will change. We just don't know what it will change to in the next couple of weeks. And the reason we don't have it, and we didn't want to estimate at it, is because the TIF, or I'm sorry, the levy limit worksheet gets released on September 2nd. We will work through that, and once we have that from the DOR, we'll be able to know what that number's going to be, and then work through this chart from there. So after, so from 2022 to 2023, we figured that 3%, because we already have that preliminary net new construction number, and then after that, we were more conservative in saying, let's expect a 1.5% increase every year after, which has been pretty typical for the City of Wapaka. 3% is higher than we've seen in recent years. The next line is debt service fund, and this is the, the part of the levy that we have more flexibility in, in adjusting to meet our debt service payment needs. This is, you can see, we've, we've put it at 1.565 million, and this would cover the, it would make more aggressive debt payments. It would cover the cost of this additional $3 million for the public works facility if that is what council chose to do. You can see the TIF number below that is reduced from 2022. The reason for that is because the closure of the TIFs and the value that was put back on the tax rolls. Now, that number, to explain that, that is the city's portion of the value in the TIFs that has to stay with the TIFs. So that is that number, and then I know Kathy took at that, a look at that, and she, we figured in potential projects in the future within the TIFs for that number changing as well. And then if you follow that through all the way to the bottom, you can see the overall mill rate impact. And again, these, I want to stress, this is not a guaranteed number by any means, because we don't even have our levy limit worksheet yet, but they do give an idea of what we believe the trends to be with this type of a plan. I can jump into the debt. Mayor, do you have anything? I will come back to this, but...
Yeah, if, if we could just, just zero in on this. If you look, then, you know, and again, the, the meaning of tonight's meeting is actually to talk about the debt service fund. So this is just a, a working paper that we're showing you at this time, you know, but don't take too much into the, into the general fund part of it. We're just trying to show you... We're just trying to show you that with the debt service fund that we're talking about here, it does fit into our model where we feel like, you know, when you, when you go down to the, almost to the bottom line there where it says the total assessed mill rate, you could see that, that total assessed mill rate starting in 2023. And as far as he has it projected to 2026 stays fairly flat. It, it doesn't, uh, it actually goes down a little bit. And that was kind of the idea, uh, that, that Aaron was talking about with the debt service fund where you can, you know, you can try and level out the, the amount of debt service, uh, payments throughout, throughout the years there to keep it at that number. You can see that in 2022, of course, which is the year that we're in right now, that our mill rate was $9.90 and, and now we are projecting right now. And again, that will change because that general fund number is not accurate yet. But, you know, we're projecting that it's going to be at $9.29. So you could see that there is a, a savings and that was Colin's question before. Uh, because of the closing of the TIFs, uh, you are seeing a decrease in, in the mill rate. So, um, there. You know, could we, could we lower the mill rate more? Yes, but it would, it would, it would have to do with the debt service fund to be able to lower that. And, uh, could it be a little higher? Yes. If we wanted to be more aggressive, you know, in, in paying off debt quicker, then it, it could be a little bit higher. So just wanted you to, to get a total picture at this, this ma, this page here. Although it, until we know the actual numbers, it, it, you know, it's, it's just a work in progress.
I think it's also important to, to take you through a worksheet here. And this was, um, something with last month. It was a thing that, a suggestion that Kathy brought up, uh, to consider, assisting our debt service payment funds in this manner. And I'm going to take us through actually page 28. Uh, this is the debt service fund budget worksheet. And there's a lot of numbers on here, but I want to bring your attention to the bottom, uh, where it says beginning fund balance. And I want to take you to the far right of the light green, just 2022. Uh, and that you'll see 597,918. Uh, that number is where that fund balance is right now, debt service fund balance. One thing that's important to note about the money that's in this fund balance is it's restricted only for the use of making debt service payments. You will see that number go up, projected to go up in 2023 to 1.64 million or a little bit over. And that is a result of the closed TIFs before they're closed and before all the dispersments are made, uh, paying back advances that were made from this fund, uh, at earlier times. So this is basically a reflection of those TIFs paying back the debt service fund in full. And that amounts to about a million dollars or over that. So what that does is it gives us the opportunity to make draws on that fund balance, coupled with debt service fund levy to help keep our mill rate as affordable as possible for the taxpayers. So you can see we make draws in the, uh, through 2025. Uh, and there's still a healthy fund balance in 2026 that's shown at 393,000. And then you start to see it go up again. Uh, and that, or I'm sorry, 2025 is 393,000. And then in 2026, you'll see it start to go up again. And that is because of revenue coming in from TIF 8, which would start paying back the debt service fund in that year. So, um, this type of a plan keeps the mill rate, um, lower, uh, for taxpayers, because of this, uh, and also doesn't draw it down to zero, um, in any of the years. So just so everyone understands the mechanics of all that work. Any questions on that?
Go ahead, Henry.
Yeah. Um, so the TIS pain advances back that the debt service fund, um, advanced. And then we do a final distribution to all the other taxing agencies, right? Based on their percentage of the total tax bill. Is that calculation included in this number as well?
Yep. That's paying ourselves back for those advances before the distribution.
And then there's that distribution. Where will that money be shown when that happens? Does that go to capital projects? Is it going to general fund? Is that a number that's 30,000? Is it a $50,000 number? Is it small?
Sure. I'm going to turn it to Kathy because Kathy's got.
At this time, we do not have final numbers because the TIFs are closing this year and we're working through the final closures. At this time, we are looking at TIF 3 not having any number to distribute back because it's, it had, um, uh, mostly getting the money from TIF 6 to pay its debt and this advances back. So the one, um, TIF that if there would be a distribution would go back to the general fund, um, would be TIF 6 and it'll probably be minimal at best. But we'll know once we have the final numbers, uh, that we give to DOR on, on TIF 6. But that does not, um, any distribution is only for the payment repayment back of the advance of debt service.
Well, and the ultimate goal is for that number to be zero when we close. So, you know, we're not looking for a distribution to, to the city or any of the other taxing authorities. That's a perfect situation. So, Paul.
I was just going to ask if that included the water fund?
The, um, TIF 8 will start paying back the water fund and its advances in 20, I believe, 2024?
We didn't have anything for the sewer fund.
Yes, there was.
There was, okay.
There was a total of about $6 million that between, um, the water and sewer fund and then another, um, million, um, two or million six to the debt service fund that have to be paid, that could be paid back.
So the one that has to be paid back though.
The water fund has to be paid back about 990,000. No, I'm sorry. There's about $990,000 worth of assets that the water fund put into TIF 8. So the difference would be the $2 million that has to be paid back as an advance, um, per the PSC. So there's got to be a $2 million payback from TIF to TIF 8. Okay.
And Kathy, just while we're on this topic, all the projections and all the worksheets and plans that we have, do you have TIF 8 paying back all of those funds before closure?
Correct.
And it's like 2032-ish.
I believe 20, uh, 2032, 33, depending on, on interest rates and the value of the increments growing into fate. Um, so we're looking at definitely closing that. And then that would also close TIF 4.
Good. Any other questions?
If not, Justin Fisher, thanks for coming. We're getting to the part that you don't need to stick around for.
Thanks, Justin.
Appreciate it. All right. So, um, oh, actually I got to go back since we did this a little in reverse. So the next thing we're going to take you through is, uh, as you can see in the packet, we have, um, a lot of our individual projects listed. We don't need to go through every individual project on this entire plan tonight. Or what our plan is, is to take you at least through the 2023 projects, geo bond projects. And that really, as we did this, as we did a run through yesterday, I realized that's mostly, um, myself and Justin. That'll be talking about each project. And if you have questions on other projects in future years, feel free to ask. But we'll go through the high level of these. Uh, so I am going, so what I'm on right now is page 13 of the packet, uh, titled projects and funding sources by department. In the 2023 column, uh, you'll see a, a large expenditure. The first one is under the airport and that is T-hanger Storage Building. Um, this is something that Matt and Brittany specifically have been a big proponent of, uh, since their time here. Beth was a proponent of it as well, um, when she was still here. And the hangup is, and why we've kept pushing it back is because costs kept rising. We weren't entirely sure how much would be able to be funded outside of city money. We recently received an email from our lead rep at the state. His name's Mark with the BOA. And he outlined this plan that would basically provide 1.2 million of the projected 1.25 million, um, in state related funds, entitlement funds. So 50,000 would be our, not, I, I should be clear. This would also count future entitlement funds that we know we're going to get in the next two years. But to give you an idea of what this project entails, it would be a, a 10 unit T-hanger Storage Facility. Uh, that 10 unit produces, each unit is $200 a month. We have a waiting list of about 15 airplanes right now that would come in, but don't have any space to come in. So the return on investment for this specific project, if you're looking at just city money, would be, um, a couple of months over two years. And then you're looking at approximately $24,000 in revenue, uh, each year after that. That would be after it got paid off. So, um, that's something that we're working, we'll continue to work with the BOA on. And that is in our, um, plan approved through them. We would just have to move it up a year. Moving down City Hall Library Building. So you'll see solar panel, energy, and feel free to stop me and cut me off and ask questions if you have a specific question on any of these.
Can I stop you and cut you off?
Absolutely.
I, I believe the airport money also includes some of that money that we transferred to other airports that we're pulling back. Just so people know about that.
Great point. Yeah. Yes. Thanks, Paul. Uh, it does. So there has been instances and council probably remembers where we've given our money that was not spent yet. The Clintonville Airport was most recent. We will be getting that back and yes, that 1.2 million does include that. Any other questions on the airport, uh, T-hanger project? Okay. If not, um, we'll go to the City Hall Library Building. This is a solar panel energy program. Justin or I could talk on this. Justin, do you have a preference?
Sure. Yeah. Um, we had this on the, on the plan further down the road, but with the assistance of a energy innovation grant that was, uh, basically sought out and awarded, uh, with the help of Greg Roman. We advanced this forward. Of course, there's focus on energy money. And so the total allotment, uh, for the city is just under $70,000. And it's, um, as you can see, the total is $342,000. So that's something we, with all the additional outside funding, we're going to prioritize that and get moving on that and have solar panels on City Hall, hopefully by the end of next year. To add on that, we're also having, uh, several Tesla battery packs that'll be installed in the basement here. Those will power the servers when the power goes off. Uh, and that supports all city functions, uh, PD, uh, every department here. So we can still operate even though the power is out.
All right. Thank you, Justin. Moving down the list, uh, we, community development, we have wayfinding implementation, $25,000. Uh, this is a, it's, it's listed as the funding being grant. It's actually room tax dollars, um, that Kathy's been putting in a, a fund that rolls over. Um, we do have the funding for that for sure for 2023. We'll talk about future, you'll see 25,000 in the next couple of years too. But the important thing to, to note is that is money on hand right now. Uh, this would go to implement, um, or start taking actions on a plan that was developed between the city and the CVB in 2017, 18 time period. And it will be matched. The CVB has also stated that they will give $25,000 towards this. So really, uh, in total, that project, community wide, would be about $50,000. Uh, more details to come on that. Jared, anything to add to that?
Oh, you hit the nail on the head.
Aaron.
Yep.
I guess the CVB is, is giving the match. Does it imply that the, that's township's money in there as well? Or is township's not doing anything? Where, where are they with this?
So that's a great question. And I, to my knowledge, I don't know, I don't believe the townships have committed anything specifically yet. Where the signage will be placed? I also couldn't tell you those details have to be worked through. Certainly all of our money will go towards city signage. I'm not, I can't say for sure yet on the CVB money. Oh, go ahead, Kathy.
Henry, um, the towns of Dayton and Farmington have instituted an 8% room tax. So they have been, um, supplying the CBB with additional funds that should be able to cover the cost of their share of any signage.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. All right. Moving down, uh, annual computer replacement. This is something that we have in there every year. Josh rotates all of our computers out. We have a lot of them, um, and usually those are five year, um, they're on a five-year program. And then once it gets to year five, it gets rotated to a computer of less importance, so to speak. And it still stays in our organization, uh, in your six to nine, 10, however long it lasts. Um, but that's a part of that program. Tower connection to the public works facility. Justin, can I kick it to you for this one?
Uh, well, this is, it's an IT project, uh, but to get connected back to the server, uh, Josh needs to put up a, a bigger towel, tower, excuse me, because it's, uh, uh, too many trees in the way. So, um, he's saying it's required in order to get us all connected on the same server. I think the plan is also it could double up as additional lease space for other providers.
Thanks, Justin. Uh, moving down the list, uh, you'll see the Swan Park Playground and Splash Pad. Uh, so just as a reminder, this has been in our plans, uh, throughout this time period. You know, when we would have had to borrow for this in 2022, we had absolutely no commitments for fundraising at that time. So the last thing we wanted to do was borrow, um, $700,000 for something that we didn't know was going to be a project or not. Obviously the Friends of Opaaca Parks, Parks Department staff have done an awesome job, uh, raising actually more than $700,000 and through grants and private donations. And then this would be the city's commitment, uh, to the other half or less than half of that project, 700,000. So that is that, which you've heard a lot about lately. Let's see, moving down, Police Department, uh, we have a patrol squad, uh, $70,000. John, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, we'd be replacing a 2018 squad. Uh, the idea is to replace them every four years. Just for the warranty, uh, we're saving a lot on maintenance. And then also we'd be looking at replacing the chief's car. Actually not replacing it, we keep it in our fleet and use it for, um, officers going to training as well as, uh, Detective Rodens would be using it for his squad.
Thanks, John. Uh, continuing to move down, back to Justin for the Street Department, 90,000 for pickup truck.
Yeah. So much like PD, the same thing, phasing out our older, uh, vehicles for maintenance issues and cost issues. Uh, we will take at least one of those trucks, there's two trucks in that, those in that 90,000, uh, turn it over to, uh, park and rec for the seasonal guys and then phase out one of those even older vehicles. And then of course, the other second truck might just be put on Wisconsin surplus and make revenue off of it.
Then to the one, I don't know if there's, we'll get more into the details of this project at the end of this.
The garage, yes.
The garage.
Yep.
Obviously we've been talking about that in earlier segments tonight. And Justin, I'll give you a lot more detail on that project in just a second. And Justin, you have the rest of them, actually.
Right. So Fulton Badger Street Project is a little bit of a moving target. So we have applied in the past for STP funding. That's the same, similar, same fund that made Main Street possible. And with all the bill packages, money coming out, there's additional funding there through that program. So we are waiting to see if this project would qualify or be awarded additional funding. The award, according to DOT website, should be made sometime early September. And so we'll know more if they're going to contribute to this project. If we do not get the STP funding, then this project's going to have to change dramatically. The initial idea was to take Fulton Street from Maine up to Hillcrest, and then Badger from Maine to State Street. Extend the downtown beautification like two blocks in either direction, and then just transfer back to a standard road. Depending on funding and how things are projecting in the future as far as material costs, again, you know, we'll have to adjust. But if we do get awarded the funding, that means that we're going to have to start working on the design of that starting next year because the DOT process is much longer. For Main Street, it was, it was all of two years, if not more. So, so that might, that number might change, that whole project might change depending on that funding source. Elm Street is a hundred percent city-funded project. Obviously, there's a lot of things out there as far as new funding, and we're always exploring those. But right now, that is our standard reconstruct project moving forward. So we'll start design on that next year and move into two thousand twenty-four with construction. That is from Highway forty-nine to Delicious Avenue. That's a narrow section. And much like our other roads that we've been doing lately, it's bad paving condition above old utilities that need to be replaced, undersized, and lead. So we're doing those all at one time.
Okay. Any questions for Justin on those? Go ahead, Colin.
Was I to understand that the idea for Fulton Street is to change it from the four lanes to two, a regular two-lane road?
It's not.
Not regular, but.
Well, that's not set in stone, but that's something we'll look into when we start looking at, or start developing that project.
Okay, that's, it's a common complaint that road, so I wondered if that was, I'm not misunderstanding what you said.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no other questions, I'm going to ask to turn your attention to page twenty-two in the packet. And that, you'll see, there's, so towards the top of the page has grand total of geo-bond funding and for all of the projects in each year. You'll see, I just want to talk about those numbers really quickly as it relates back to our one point five million dollar strategy per year. So you can see, obviously, in two thousand twenty-three, that four point three million, that includes the three million, three point oh five million of the Public Works Garage, that note anticipation note. So if you take that away, of course, we're at that one point three or underneath that one point five. Two thousand twenty-four, or right around that one point five number. In this budget, we're not looking to, to approve two thousand twenty-four. So we'll talk about that more in within the year. Two thousand twenty-five, you'll see a higher number again, and that's where we have the potential borrow for the infrastructure for River North. So if you take away the potential borrow, we would want to be around that one point five. Again, anything above the one point five tied to that would be, we would want to make sure we had assurances of TIF increment coming to pay that part, port, portion off. And then you can see as we're getting into two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven, obviously, we're on both sides of that one point five million. That is a ways out, but I just wanted to show you kind of what that looked like as we discussed it earlier. Any questions on, any questions on that or any questions on anything else, any specific projects maybe that caught your eye in the future?
Can you, oh. The Quiet Zone implementation that you have listed for the third year here, could you describe that?
Yeah. So I'm going to start by describing a step we have to take yet this fall, and that is a feasibility study. And we're, Justin and I talked a week or two ago about getting an RFP out taking that twenty-five thousand dollars we had budgeted for this year to get that feasibility study done. What that feasibility study would do is show us probably more accurate numbers. And typically, they've said, every time you go through a feasibility study or when municipalities do that, they find out that it's cheaper than they thought it was going to be. By no means is it going to be cheap. But that feasibility, the Quiet Zone, is improvements to all of our railroad crossings to make it so the train does not have to blow their horn every time. Improving, the theory is improving quality of life in the residential areas. So that's what that.
Thank you.
Yep. If, so if not, we'll transition to the more detail on the Public Works Facility. But obviously, this gets adopted when we actually adopt our final budget. So if there's questions, feedback for any of us, the mayor, anybody, we would, we're always willing to take questions in the upcoming weeks and feedback.
We will be putting up, right now, the, the packet does not have the individual projects in them where the justifications from the departments are on, so we'll put that up in a separate document on the website. So if you want more detail, you can see what the departments have requested in detail. It's just that it's another seventy-five pages that would have added to it. And if we didn't want to give you the, a bigger pot than you needed, so. But we will give that information in the, in the total packet.
Thanks for the reminder, Kathy. Go ahead, Henry.
Thanks, Mayor. I just had a quick thought on that Elm Street project. There's probably some grant opportunities there because there, I think there's a, a plan to connect Rotary Riverview Park up to, to Swan Park. And there could be a Rails-to-Trails piece to that and do something like we did on Evans or you did on Evans. And that really made that street so much better, safer, and people are walking there and biking. Maybe there's, you know, some other money that Greg could try to apply for.
Yeah, good point.
Because there's an existing plan, which is less than five years old, I think.
Yes, there, yeah, there's, that's, that's a good point. And there are, so there's that plan, and there's also the bike and pet plan that also notes that as an opportunity. And both of those can be used to potentially leverage grant dollars. I know Justin's thought about that as, kept his eye forward. All right. Justin, I'm going to scroll to your pages.
Sure, go to page thirty, please. So our future Public Works Facility. This first graphic is a basic graphic of what the site will look like, top-down view during construction. The highlighted, I guess, circle and line around is the fencing. There will be temporary fencing in the front. You know, this is for a secure construction site. It's going to be heavy construction, so anybody that comes on site has to have a hard hat, steel toe boots, safety glasses, and probably ear protection as well. So it'll be gated, the, the yellow area or band with the arrows just shows the movement that'll typically happen through there, that area. Field trailers will be on the left near the tennis courts. And then, of course, you know, all the action right in the middle with the building going up. The existing water garage, which is slightly cut off, will remain until the very end, until it's moving ready. And then that building will eventually come down. So that's just kind of a, a basic overview of how construction will look. The next page, yes, this is the start of our final plans. These are a hundred percent civil design sets, which means they're not bid plans. We have a few minor tweaks that are still being done as we speak. Jensen's just going to keep scrolling through some, I mean, there's a lot of details in these plans and could sit here and talk forever if you let me. But the, the plan is to put these out on the street for advertising tomorrow. So starting tomorrow, September first, they'll be out there for, for bidding. Bids are expected to come back on the twenty-first of September. That's when we've indicated by two o'clock, we're going to have an opening. Can you stop there, Aaron, please? And then after we get those bids tabulized and analyzed, we'll bring it back to you guys here on October fourth for the final approval of the project. So this sheet that I asked Aaron to stop on is the basic overview of the building. I think we've gone through this over before a little bit. This is turned ninety degrees, so north is actually to your right as you're looking at it. So I'll, so just the bottom of the sheet is, is Harding Street. And the trucks would come in to the north, loop around, and then come in the backside, which is near the cursor there, Aaron. I don't know if you can kind of, no, up left right there. That's the main door into the back. You can see it's a, like a single barrel, they call it, design, where all the big trucks would be parking, smaller trucks as well. And then they head out south to Michigan Street. So our current configuration with all our various garages is, you know, we have garage doors that are fourteen, sixteen feet wide. Going in, we're pulling out, or backing in and then coming out. We've had many mirror benders over the years. These doors are twenty feet wide, you go in one way. So it should make things a whole lot better and more efficient. Are you able to zoom in? Can you zoom in to the kind of the bottom left there? So I believe we talked about this in the past, but it, it doesn't hurt to mention again. So the vestibule oh-one is the entryway, so that's near the bottom there. And that's the main entrance. And that's a secured entrance, much like PD. So from there, any visitor would have to check in. And then from there, they're allowed to either go to the meeting room, the assembly room slash break room, or then, or accepted into the offices. The assembly room is more or less a break room that has a dividing wall in between that and the meeting room. So we can have break being used by the staff every single day and have a conference going on at the same time in that separate meeting room. We get together and do our larger trainings and meetings. We can open that divider wall, move some tables around, and it can accommodate all those sort of functions. So utilizing spaces for multiple different ways is just one thing we did to try and control the cost on this project. Offices, there are, so Office one oh one, one oh two, that's assumed to be my office, one oh one. And then one oh two would be the facility superintendent. Those offices are not huge. We asked for twelve by twelve offices. I mean, they're pretty close to that. You can see they kind of adjusted it to make fit. So those are slightly smaller, I would say, than like the city administrator clerk's office at this time. But they're big enough, so if we needed to add an extra guy and for whatever reason, we could fit two people in each of those offices. It says, excuse me. Office one oh three, that's going to house all the water operators, so three to four guys here on out to the future. And then just the north of that is just more of our operations. So our meter testing area, our sign shop, keep going, Aaron, please, if you can scroll. Parts room. And then next to that is Street Superintendent Office, next to the mechanic office. And then to the north even further yet is the repair garage, which is much more accommodating than what we have now. But when we started designing, we started here because our vehicles, our equipment are the heart of our operations. And we take pride in taking very good care of them because it increases the longevity. It gets a better sale when we finally put these things off for auction. And we also service the police department, so we need, you know, a better area for that as well. So just the north of that, the fourth bay is a wash bay right there. So again, keep our vehicles clean, increase their life and longevity. So you can zoom out. The rest of the plan is, like I said, high detail for all the contractors that will be bidding on this. If you keep scrolling, I want to highlight page forty-eight. Are you passed in? So this is like the HVAC plan. So we have these two fans that will be positioned there. And we said, hey, what are those things called? And they told us those are BFGs.
That's what they're called. That's the name of the company.
They're like fourteen-foot blades, but they're extremely efficient. They run real slow, they don't use a whole lot of power, but they move a lot of air. And that's really important in this setting because we have trucks that need to sit there and idle, warm up, and we can't have guys getting sick while they're there. If you can zoom in a little bit more, Aaron, you can see like eight black circles in that, that's a roof line. Those are tube lights or solar tubes that basically just captures the sun and lets it through into the building. So again, that was initiative we wanted to do between windows and using those solar tubes. So we can use this building, hopefully without even turning the light on. Obviously, we will at times, so we can see better. But then it just makes for a happy and healthier environment, better workers. And when we're responding and the lights are out, well, hopefully, lights will never be out. Well, we do have a backup generator as well, so. Okay, you can keep moving on, Aaron. So this is the site elevations. So as you're looking at that top one, that is from the east or Harding Street. The second one down is from the west or say the outfield fence of Lakewood Field. The third one down is from Michigan Street, or that is basically the front. And then the bottom one there is the very rear of the building. So if you're by the north goalpost of Hobart Cornfield, that's the way it looks. And then these are just cutouts showing more details on various pieces within the, the building. And as you scroll, more details on how it is to be built. These will be sent down to Madison for review or site, or, excuse me, building review. And they should come back, I would assume, you know, and get stamped approval. And then, of course, we'll share those, and we have already shared it with our building and zoning department. So here's some renderings that I'm know everybody will be interested in seeing. This fir, first one is probably the best one of the bunch. This is, if you're standing in the middle intersection of Harding and Michigan Street. So we, we actually gave Barrientos our, our branding guidelines, and they use that to try and, I guess, develop these plans. You can see it's got a very good mixture of, of, of different building elements to break it up. So it's an industrial building, and it's a metal building, but yet it has enough elements with the windows being offset, a few colors, different color palettes in it. We'll have some masonry on the side. And then, of course, landscaping to just break it up. So it is, I mean, it, it has a lot of aesthetic elements to it while being very cost-effective at the same time. Scroll down, this is just further north up the road. The big gray building to the back, that is the repair garage. That's a different type of build, that's a concrete panel, which is precast, shipped to the site, and then tipped up and then kind of bolted together. We wanted that for the entire building, but that's a little bit more expensive than like the metal building. We could not get away from it in the repair garage area because we need much higher elevations inside for our cranes, our lifts, and then also for truck boxes that have to tip up. And again, you can notice the very wide garage doors, so twenty-foot wide. So it should accommodate all of our vehicles we have. To the right is a fence, so our site will be secured, much like it is down on Auburn Street. We'll fence around it with a gate. You can scroll down. Just another view near Michigan and Harding where that person is walking in, that is basically the front door into the vestibule. Just a different, slightly different angle. We are taking on the landscaping, so the, the city street crew will do, will do all the landscaping, will do the topsoil work, the planting, so the trees will not be that big when we first start out. They need a little time to grow. And that's just kind of another view of, of looking straight into like the main entryway. Finally, another view of kind of the split between the repair garage and the main build. That door there leads into. Um, that door there leads into, uh, the water department. Those guys are coming and going quite often with, uh, service calls, meter testing. So we gave them a, an extra set of ease of access there.
Do we have any specific questions?
Justin, uh, you're going out for the bids and all, I presume there's no expectation of starting any groundbreaking in the fall, or is there?
Oh, uh, I should have mentioned that, yes. Um, not, not this fall, no. Yeah, but we're expecting to break ground September of '23. And that's much later than we anticipated or wanted, but that is, um, because of supply chain issues. So by the time we round up all this steel, that's the soonest we can start.
Okay.
So the, the, the bidders have to bid with a pretty long time horizon, right?
Yep. So the, the bids are late, or the, the plan is, the bids are submitted on the 21st, but we were told the, for the steel components, they're only good for 15 days. Cause that is just how the market is right now with the steel market. So that is, that is the reason why we timed it up, get the bids. We tried to get this out sooner, you know, because every day that number changes and then bring it to council here on the 4th, October 4th. So once, once they're approved, that number is then locked in. So they, those contractors lock that number with their supplier and any future increases or decreases, it doesn't matter, that's where we're at.
Anybody else? Questions, comments? So I think, again, just to repeat what Justin said, so the, the bids are going to come in on September 21st and, and are, without having to have another city council meeting, special city council meeting, we're looking at, at, at approving, at looking at these bids on the, on the 4th, but the total expectation would be for you to vote on those bids. So you're not going to have, you're not going to have a week or two to, to, to make that decision, although, you know, you've known for quite a while what, what this is going to look like, but, um, if, if you, well, I, I think it will work. I mean, if you guys feel like you want to have, uh, a presentation, then we, then we would have to have a special city council meeting sometime after the 21st and then have a, and then have a regular meeting on the 4th so that you get two chances to look at it, which is the way we usually try to do it. But I, I think we feel strong enough that we, we can just go right to the 4th. But if, if you think it's different, let us know on that. Andrew, go ahead.
I just have a comment. I mean, for a project to increase 30-plus percent, my hat's off to the team and the, the outside people and the mayor for guiding us because that's, that's a hell of an increase. And we've been talking about doing this. How many years does it take to build a public works facility in the city of Wapakas? 25 years. So I hope even if we get another curve ball or two, that somehow we got to get this project done. The department needs it. And I hate the thought that we could have had $3 million to do other projects in our city, um, but to focus and get this done, I think it's time. Department's been very patient through the years, so.
Thanks, Henry. So I, you know, if, if those numbers come in pretty close to, to the, uh, estimate that we received back in May, which would be an additional $3 million, $50,000, you saw from the, from the debt service chart that, that we can, we can handle that, okay? And that's even with doing, uh, a million and a half of, of, uh, capital improvement, uh, you know, every year, all the way out to, I think we went 20, 47. Yeah, so it does show that we can do that. Now, if it comes in lower, that would be awesome than the, you know, than that total package. Um, if it comes in more, we'll have to, we'll probably need the extra time to talk to the finance department and Justin Fisher to, to see how we can work that in. But let's just hope, hope that that number is, is not more than the $3 million, $50,000 or there.
This is completed and you're all moved in as the plan to sell off all the other buildings or indoor properties?
Um, no, not all of them. Uh, so Auburn Street is where street garage is now. We're going to keep that, it's not that old of a building and that'll be utilized between, uh, parking rec and then the wastewater department that's there, um, will move over. Water Street Garage, which is up here, we think is a really nice area that could be utilized for something else. It's surrounded by a park, so I don't see selling that off. Uh, Churchill Street Garage could be though. We don't have much use for it after the garage is not needed anymore. So that would be about the only one. Uh, and Harding Street, of course, that's going to get demolished and we'll have this instead.
Go ahead, Scott.
Justin, all these bids you're sending out, they're, the entirety of the project, you know, with, you know, because we've read seven, now we're going to add a number three, you're expect, everything's going to be in that total we're going to see?
Right, yes. At one point, we had explored the option of having two separate bid packages. Um, and the, the reason for that was to try and secure the major components sooner, but the issue we felt there was we would be forcing the hand and then having too many unknowns of, of having a second bid package later. So it'd only be like, say, two-thirds of the project. So we switched to, or we focused or we stayed with just a, a single bid package and it's the whole kit and caboodle. Everything is in it, so.
I suspect Myron's in charge of that then?
Yes, yes.
Package and knowing what they're, have to do to make our totals come out or, or, you know, for our future planning.
Right. So they're doing, yes, they're doing all the bidding for us. We will receive the bids, uh, the city will, and they will be opened with Myron and Variantos and whoever else in the room, whoever wants to attend at the same time, like a standard public bid opening.
Go ahead.
I have two questions, one related to your plan and one related to the financing. Uh, the first question was, uh, is Harding Street going to end at Michigan now or is it continue parallel to this building?
It will continue parallel along the building up to the gate.
And at that point, it's a, a dead end?
Right.
Okay. And then the second question about the financing is, I believe in one of our previous, uh, meetings, Kathy, you talked about something that I really didn't understand as a way to finance this, that's talked about water, fund, et cetera. Is that out? Is that what I understand? We're, we're looking at a different way to fund it?
Yes. Instead of have, at one time, we didn't have the capacity under our pla- our debt service policy to, uh, have that extra $3 million.
Okay.
But because of 13% equalized growth that we have, we have that capacity now.
Okay, great, thank you.
The other thing was, is that we will still continue to pay off a million and a half to $2 million worth of debt each year.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead, Justin.
Uh, this will be going to plan commission next Wednesday for site plan review. So if you want to hear more about it, we'll, probably won't be talking financials unless Jared's really that interested. It's mostly going to be landscaping, zoning code, that sort of thing.
It'll be scrutinized, that's for sure.
Great.
Justin, how many bid packages approximately are you going to be sending out?
Um, let's see here, there, I think it's somewhere in the realm of like seven. It's, it's broken down quite a bit, so.
Okay.
Or broke.
Works for me.
And then would you be able to, because of the, uh, timeframe of this issue, would you be able to forward when that is decided? Perhaps an email to council with what, uh, the amount would be and who it was and, um, some of the specifics of it, please?
Let, let, uh, we'll try to, let's, let's, uh, we need to have that discussion. I think we could at least get you, uh, like, you know, a
High level.
Yeah, high level, number.
That's what I was asking for.
Yeah, yeah, I think we could do that.
I mean, the bid tab is public record as soon as we're open.
But we, you still need to scrutinize it and so we need time. You, you know, they need time to go through the whole thing and, and if it's more, we need to figure out how we're going to pay for it. So, but yeah, I think we can get you, I think your question really is, is it, is it going to be 10 million or is it going to be 8 million or is it going to be 12 million?
Yeah, and, and who, you know, who won the bid, range of the bids, that sort of thing.
Sure. Well, nobody wins the bid till you approve it.
Very true.
Give us too much credit.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions? Thanks, Justin. Any other comments? Aaron, any other comments?
No, nothing.
All right, thank you. I, I said two hours, so we're, I still got 38 minutes or so to finish out. I did, just a couple of comments I want to bring up tonight. Uh, one, uh, at our September 6th meeting, we do have a committee of the whole meeting, uh, which is dealing with the budget. It's just the transit though, right?
TIF transit.
Okay.
TIF, we've talked about a ton.
Yeah, so it's TIF and transit that night. So we feel like we can do that all in one night. Uh, and then we have, uh, and then of course we have our regular scheduled meeting on the 20th. When is personnel again? Is that in September or 10th?
Um, I think it is potentially scheduled for then, but just stay tuned.
Yeah, okay. And then we're, we're looking at, like I said, we're going to have at least one special meeting to deal with, with TIF 11 and it will prob- it will be somewhere after, after the 20th. So it'll be somewhere between the 21st and the, and the 28th of September. Uh, and we'll obviously, uh, get that out to you as soon as possible. We might even know tomorrow.
Um, potentially, yeah.
Yeah, we, we might know tomorrow, so we can try and get some dates out to you to see if that works. Uh, and then, uh, September 6th, does that work for, uh, anybody not going to be here on September 6th? Does that work for, uh, picture night? Do we, do we try for that? Okay. All right.
Do you want us to wear a tie?
Uh, you know, last time I told everybody that I was, uh, wear whatever you want to wear. I'm going to wear this, so, you know, I, I don't, you know, we, yeah. If you want to wear a tie, that'd be great.
We don't look good, we just will limit who we show.
Photoshop it. Yeah. Anybody else have anything for the good of the meeting? Brewers did win today, six to one.
Good.
Yay. All right, we need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dex Driver. We adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Say no.
Aye.
Congratulations on your retirement.
We'll take you. Motion carried, we're adjourned at, uh, 7:24 PM.